Minister Jenkins, Malumil Tuta. Me kumate ale, kuel gamor gau ma trigal management ra MOI la ngartele al Tuta. Artia Director Gil Callan, Bureau of Curriculum and Instruction, regal director mo'ol, Bureau of Education Administration, chip tomochi ra Personal Management, chip ngiraswe ra Research and Evaluation, chip migal ra School Management. Specialist de deina gatal, bravasi ngartela omte ra chip magadiata le'ani amring o'ilmi ngara'plai, ma chip tavulwala Division of Instruction Implementation and Teacher Training. Akmreng asuulul ngartiang, e aldu bagadu ulgirak milmer tiang, egida atmakal ngartial elbongleda arangalge, e egel kudosa damali milutka arangalge, ma skuli arangalge. Egida atmal gayin siloseng, e egelse el mu'ao de ngeni kutmukl giril arangalga maskula, skuli arangalge darapul belau. Medik kue'agnaisar al ngartial lobongkele al Tuta. Ngartiang a Vice Chair, Education Senator Singino, Floridira Senator Aldubela regal ngartial lobongke, Senator Sangoba ngartial regal lobongke, en ga'gida Senator Inabol ngartial regal da'agale al Tuta. A'amar te'el bi ra Senator Sula ngartiang, to'aram ne'sorilme ding tral sula skechul ndang ngartiang. Taytai segida arangala egida ngartial Tuta. Amitinger gida mal di mo'ang estere sel mildungul to'goyl wa sing namo di'a akwarli assessment testa segidi a so'adere al chilse. Ma egel babil ngarand me'egi da bodoki uni, en nga'ea akmo turvert regal Senator se ma akmir agel giril segidi il to'oi. Emrgoe e awuli ulen mosi'il ngania, atelil o'gera abibi ra to'goyl tangmo so'iril bol klawadel. Di segidi aman mokte re'tiam, rogul to'goyl bo'ku'gera mal di'gang estere segidil to'goyl mildatmukl do'tonil wa se el alchilse ndi'a akwarli assessment testa. Kabo aneksa slide de tia, so'daita etia gida so'alamam ilila ulilwa segida mla'garai mil el alchilse. Mo'sera, adhomesera se September 24 de Island Times, entilobda to'oye minister. E'rel ndil ona light. E se ayat di'ngartiang, gama olava e babil madumi, refer mora egal molable, sel ngarse di'akku ngel naga senmuni. Di segidil September 24, segidil arigol che'tilobde, to'goyl ngarse wa se egal quarterly assessment testa were a waste of time. Segida abaita mildatmukl to'oi, se seral to'goye te'gida kitmukli, mso'aluwa esima se milgarang. Segidil time, nga'gam le'kou'le mora egal school wa sing ti'al to'goym la to'vde ngania memo lobongke ti'al statement, el makatakla egel wa se tiang waisi mangara tralentengil to'oi, segida wulgeri ngani school. Seraku'gen dimlaga at to'goyl may, te'di wa sing tilobda memo, ndi tilobda email, ngara minister il mora beklav, li wa sing mo'di'a akwarli assessment ra October 5 el ma'sebena, karada di'mo di'til rulat estertir, e osis akla dimlmoni. Regal tilobda to'goyl wa se tilobda beser grading system, il follow uper segidil statement. Ay ga'gida to'oi aknilai, emne'hal al el mengilmo September 30, el mengil ra Principals Forum wa se, al talbora forum, el to'vde egel ngari al mutul mor di'te, le se'gal may ma'kom dangli ti'al direction. Segidil nomrega September 30 2021, e se luriul sande'ak mlo'geril wa se, ngania memo lo'ais wa sing namo di'a akwarli, how are we moving forward to ensure essential ultra'la curriculum benchmarks, planning towards those learning curriculum benchmarks, em kara'ada asesa arangalge wa se tolde gede ka'egi di'lam su'bu. Mildutel el alchilse, ndiraka kuma memo. Agari wa sing el al time ngania memo la to'vde, ndiraga memo, minister. Minister Jenkins? Is there a memo to date about this move to stop the quarterly examination? Is there a memo? Is there a memo that was sent out to the schools? That's what I'm asking. There's no memo. Okay, just the email. Okay. So el alchilse ndi'a a memo. Etia gida kabo aneksa slide. Segidil se la to'vde, mildutu aneksa. Etia gida minister ma management team, gata klilu'belau ulululutmukri uni, egadu ngartiang. Agot, akpulon ngitra, knila atulgra MOI, wa se me'gul ngitam bo'ku'visita school, e ke'lu wa se ti'al to'goyl dilubun klawadra'adra school, em kara'alu rurtrini. Ntila egida babil ngarand me'wa se kudulmu'ura koror ra October 14, emlmonl mon'odri ra ira el sera November 8, nosa del mestril ra 145 el ad, 11 principals, mangara 140 some teachers. Segida al ngler al 141 teachers ma principals ra bekl school, except, ay egel outline school, egidim ulus emlaga mentor tir, dimlaga sa'om visita ti. Ay ga'gida egel tre'tela gi'lamolatiang em'odu ra beklav. Sel so'alamao otirel al merkamie management team, sensea awal ngler ar sensea wa se, we were not consulted. Dimlaga tal el do'dul ma'ar sensea alul belau, ay egel rogul school plor uni, er ti'al to'oi. Ngaram gida mulu ra sensei, regal sensei tirgai oltauta etia luriol, they're the ones in the trenches, and they were never asked about this. E seraku'aisa kame'ul ngara'gam, e seral omu'ltiang, egomam sensei mna'arsay, komamiam mna'arsay mla'egel at'at, ra parents. This time around, not one discussion with teachers. Senator Singino lobongke lamara koror, mni absurba comment, Floridira lobongke lamahiris, emle with this, segida comment. So that's one thing that I want to say at this point. Bitia gida. Agot regalige goragai Director Gil Callan wa se, mla'ngania omsu'be, malu'eng review gau lulu otil wa se egal QAT, adi'a al tutel el mora ministry. Did you do something like that? See, that's all for you. Question to Director Gil Callan is, did she analyse, review, and have a finding that QAT is of no use to the ministry? I want to find out from Director Gil Callan.
Yes, one of the reasons why egim la uspe Iowa assessment is because egal quarterly, a gaman assessment, ra sela quarterly ra in the fall, egadu uspel three months. El atetela egal sel later, egim ilu ra Central Office, lo'olmo wa se, ngaram no'di'a akwarli, egal quarterly da uspel, informa instruction ma professional development. A problem el al time ra quarterly, so'adere uspel wa sing informa instruction, ndi mnamo mlaraga ti'gal waisi. Egidile quarterly a muspel ngil summative, by the time el to'va egay, en grade arangalga. Mndi akasve edel we teach. Segida issue a quarterly assessment. Alin ding ngania standard, ra egal rogul school, everything ngania standard, ndi no'di'a se'gida assessment. Le assessment el dorur ngil al summative, ndi'akate'ele del motmu, e we teach. Le en grade arangalga el al time. Segida issue a quarterly. Enegire da uspel informative, instruction, e drive instruction ma planning ra every school year. Ya quarterly da'kal do'uspel waisi el al time, en grade arangalga.
Sen'tulak muspel waisi el al time, ng'tila ngudu swem kame'ul du'ar sensei.
A'ulmesa scores.
You didn't talk to the teachers? Di'ulmesa scores, sen'maduni wa se ndi'akuspel el al time?
Ndika egim la review, eh at the same time egim la dudu ra staff, eh omitting the management, egadu akasve egadu ngaga lru la decisions. Ay ga'gib lem omes, at the same time akpul review egar rogul scores ra Iowa, ma'egida le quarterly, ya, to go back three years, our schools are failing. So segida drive, egida decisions. In the last three years, eh we want to be at 50 to 75, to be improving, we want to be at 100%. In the last three years, we're in the 22 percentile. We have to go back and reteach.
Tilang Iowa?
Ma egidile quarterly.
Kabo, Iowa and quarterly?
Egim la omesa quarterly ma Iowa, may egida bebi ra language test, inconsistent. In the last three years, egidil, a school se bela ar murtra 22%. We have no time, we have to start.
Okay, segida, tila egida, so I got that. Okay, kadbora minister. Kamim, kogumaduni wa sing ra ulmuniya quarterly, do you know why we had the quarterly assessment test?
I understand the reason, yes.
What was the reason?
To evaluate curriculum.
Thank you. Okay, the next question. Kam, please, sen'egel findings, ra'ala ni determine wa se quarterly is a waste of time.
I don't believe my statement is that it was a waste of time. I say it is not the best use of instructional time.
Okay. Next question, how many teachers did you interview?
Over the past eight years, I was a member of the PTA, a vice chair. I spoke with many teachers about this, but I didn't interview anybody on this issue other than my leadership team.
And how many special, that's what you said to the press. What did the specialist say about the quarterly? Specialist? Based on the news article, the specialist were informing you on that the quarterly was not the best use.
That's correct.
Yes, what was the statement by the specialist?
I'm sorry, repeat this.
Specialist. The news article says the specialist gave you information that is quarterly was...
The information for the Iowa exams, and the also the information for the quarterly assessments, the quarterly assessment result, the only thing we receive on those is the average score per school and then per whole, which really in terms of statistically analyzing to see what type of events are going on in the curriculum, has not helped very much.
Okay.
We need it, we need itemized analysis, which we did not receive.
Yes, I'll get to that later. Okay. Segida so'alamam gata klil wa sing, so'adu ma'segid milgarang, akmulwa se ti'adia'ak tutel. Edi'aga adri'ar sensei, egim odunegi, serapora school, egar rogul school, e waisi, dimlaga tal sensei, tirgai strong teachers, selo waisi wa se egan adi'aga tutel. So'apu'di management. Dimlaga school por uni, edan ok la'ar sensei, tirgai gida akmurwama se egan, adi'aga uspel le'el, la tre'tel el omsu'bu, mosis akla. Not once. Not once did any teacher stand up and say, a ye agree, li wa se egal quarterly, adi'aga tutel, ti'aga uspel le'el, ndi'agudunwa se komkara ngutila. Okay, we'll come back to the quarterly. Next slide. The next slide, Minister, that I want to get your attention, is the new grading system you issued September 21st. That says test, 45%, quizzes, 20%, assignment, classwork, 15%, project papers, 20%, class participation, 10%. Kam, explain, em'nganga la sensei, egal confused ti'al grading system. Komkara'm sa'10% tangalga for participation. Telenalda se iman, wanalda se iman, how do you weigh that?
That would depend on your coursework. For example, in teaching of science, it would say, how did the students perform during laboratory exams? Do they follow proper instructions? Do they complete their work? Are they there on time? Do they participate in group and individual activities? That's, that's the reason. This issue was the brought up, that these students were being graded 70% on examinations, on summative evaluations, not formative evaluation. In other words, you test them and you move on. We're trying to move toward a system where students have an opportunity to work with teachers, to learn from their mistakes, and to contribute in learning styles other than getting the right answer on a test.
The point, Minister, is the teachers are not sure about this. You gave this out and you didn't inform them how to use this. You're saying that now, but it's not clear to the schools. I went to the school, they're not clear about that. Second question. Sel 20% paper project, how is that happening in first grade?
Very simply, they can write, they can read, they can write letters. The idea here is if you look at our Iowa assessment, our writing skills are very, very poor, very poor, much poorer than anybody would imagine. It's because they simply do not focus on writing at an early age, and it can be done. I've seen it done, I know it can be done.
First grade, what does it look like in first grade in first quarter?
Well, unfortunately, our first grade is actually a kindergarten class, so in the first quarter, they're learning to write their letters, they're learning to difference between capital and non-cap, and smaller caps, they're learning the difference between vowels and consonants, so writing of that is important. They learn to hold a pencil. These kids have never been in school. You must start with very basic things in those levels at that time.
Not all of them, not all of them have not been in school. Not all of them are like that. You're making that blanket.
I have been in the classrooms watching.
Not all of them. Moving on to the next question. 20% paper project in math class for first graders, what does that look like?
Again, paper projects, they can be homework, they could be writing, they're answering their problems, it can be drawings. There are many different varieties of ways of making paper projects to be appropriate to the student's age. You're not necessarily thinking that a first grader is going to write a thesis, of course not, but there are ways in they can develop their writing skills. That's the purpose of that.
Coming back to those two things, you send that out, teachers were not informed how to use it. When I went around, some of them, they don't know how to use this, they used the old system because they're not quite sure of this. And they graded the student in first quarter. Some of them did not use this because they do not understand this at all.
Senator Tabo, can I add?
Yes.
Okay, so let me ask you this. First grade, egaltalbora school, real school first grade, egidile quarterly a 75%, el grade arangalga.
No, 25%.
I mean, 25%. Is that fair for a first grade, a summative evaluation?
I'll come back to that later. I want to get this grading system in place. The ti'al grading system, malasal point, Minister, you sent this grading system at eight week of school. Teachers know this, and you should know, you should never change the grading system eight week of school with something you did not start with in the first day of school.
What credit system are you referring?
The grading system that you issued under eight week, this one that we're looking over here. You issued this at eight week of the school year. Ng'a eight week.
I disagree, I would like to add.
Kabo.
Alisa 25%, ay egidile quarterly. For example, cause start ra school year ra foli, osis akla 10 standard, omes is akla 10 malak, ya by November, egatest ra first grade, lo'mu'ra school, a 25% grading, is that fair?
I'll go to the quarterly.
That's how quarterly is conducted right now.
El al time, ngartial grading system.
A grading system...
The grading system, etia gida issue. Eight week, egom issue ngil mora school, er sensei, dimlaga lodongli tiang, em akgrade arangalga na end of the quarter with the grading system they did not have in the first place. It is not fair to the teachers and it's not fair to the student.
It's fair?
It's not.
It's fair?
Ndia'al fair. Ndia'al, kame'amaduni, ndia'al si'ulchensha rules in the middle of the school year.
Ka'el sensei, amlam o'free, lulu'is akla'klastar gau, ek grade ni based on what you've taught. Ndia'al valid, also'uma ngalga ngara'as school ngarad, or ng'esa, ya Central Office, a dictator, atest, edagladongli tel kla'lu.
Kabu'tal dictator grade.
I want to say, I don't think, I don't think you're giving much credit to our teachers. I had one teacher come in and ask specific questions on how they could implement that. We had a very good meeting on that, she walked out understanding completely. I think you've got to give your teachers a little bit more credit than you are. They're not robots, they can do these things.
Minister, I went to the schools, I sat down with them, one of them said, I didn't use this, I don't understand this grading system, I used the old one. That's one out of many, there are, our first grade teachers, adi'agladon, wa se ti'am kara', there's 30% ti'al grading, edagladongli, egadu autre'ni, egadu da grade arangalga first quarter. Se'ya, a pressing issue, it's unfair to the students who have to be graded on something they were not aware of, ma'teacher uspel. So segida, so'alamo otis, segidil grading system, and move on to the next slide. Segida so'alam, gata klil, sel grading, etia gida tre'tela grading system that we have, and the details that go with that. Al bebi ra time, yurur muli egida detail ma'ar sensei gida, le sensei gida, edi'agal se'gada di'ua, o'aisel email mortil, et understand the grading system implemented uni, this issue beklav, that needs to be done to our teachers. N'di'ashe'el di'email mortil, expect them to do miracles and grade them accordingly. Segida so'alam gata klil se. Komu'usu'be se ak morti'agidil. Etia gida slide, so'alamo otil wa sing ra tre'tel el aduspe a quarterly. O'era'por tiang, en so'alamo otia first el, hensirengal ma'ar se ngarau ulm, ti'al quarterly ngania relim la school alul belau. Number one, sera egibem sen'era 97, er beklav, eti'gida gauri kilu mangani, edi'aga adul tirakani, mndi mla'aga adul tirakra kilu. Sel time, ya schoola'ada ngarse so'alam, sel se'gada. Segida, emlemi nitra sel system, arangalga sel to'vde high school at eight grade, mo' nine grade, edi'aga ready ra high schoola'ulm ngania wa eight and hef, ma'egel ba to'goyl issue ra, arangalge et nine grade. Segida egida lilul mora quarterly ra 97. N'ara ngiril ya quarterly, nga'ategi de Director Gilan, nga'ashe'la di'ul mortiang, aknus o'isupertiang, I was one of those teachers that did not like the quarterly. I protested. This quarterly forced me to learn the curriculum and to learn the skills to teach accordingly. Our result paid off. Segidil, clouding era sensei, ra curriculum, mosis akla'igal el alchilse, director mo'ola kal, agongel wa se bekl school ngania rogul sen'eringi, expert ra'antent, ma'curriculum waisi ndi'a. Segida ngani, had we not come to the quarterly, edi'agar sen'eringi, el expert ra curriculum. El alchilse ngani, particularly, I have many lulu'so'adere tirak, lotke'emo ngaram longui, tele, she knows this curriculum by revision date. You cannot test an item, da'ngar sen'subdaw, wa se ti'da'ngel ngartiang. That's the depth, ra clouding era sen'era alul belau, ra antent, and what they need to teach in every school. Segida, oleng el'tiel urulwa se, ulm ngania klungel'tiel. Segida o'oti, el'akad mor sel wa sing, mla'garra koror elementary school uspe ay ga'gida le'era. By the way, a quarterly, back then, adi mla'gal perfect, and still not perfect today. Yet, n'se'gada ngania du'upi ngartiang. So etia gida o'oti, tiang, a gauri elementary school, ng'et teacher goreng ak kulinitra ankle'el mang'asil say, te'ga student ra koror 2012-13, se'af first quarter, se'am le lastel, quarterly ra'nganga akmreng. Tegel student omesirti. Sel omeser segidil ngatilang, egigida score arangalga. Ndia'agudunwa se kame'ukom so'adangala uspel le'la quarterly, ndi tiang egidim relira koror, and we used this. Omesa egel tengar arangalga, kama'atengar ng'el number one, ra letter grade ni'ram, a report card, ma'quarterly ni'iram, a ripa, for that first quarter. Ay ga'gida rogul school omeser tiang, egom apetenswa sing mle'ongara tengar arangalga report card ni'ri, and how is the student doing in the quarterly? Ta'tersa, so'singal ngalga mla'cover, egasum nga'e, e winga quarterly, we know they've covered the content, and strong enough to move on. Segidi awerel tiang, ki'muluspel ni, in every quarter. Segida ngartiang. Tregal ngalga sera aktilutul, tra'artrigal ngalga, melasen nextel omeser ni, a year 2019, year 2020. Sel ngalga ngartiang, aktim le'figra number one, ma'number four, ma'number eight, ma'number 12. Ay egida score tir a classroom, ma'quarterly tir, er segidil first quarter al eight grade. Finalisel lastel slide. Sel, seraba altovra et grade ra koror, e segi sel di'annual chipi'ertir, ya number one a 3.8, a number four a 3.9, a number eight a 3.9, a number 12 a 4.0. Segida emle finalisal te'ir, karanga koror. Akmle'tra'artrigal ngalga ma'apal high school. On'ertira ng'apal high school 4.0. At'erutira ng'aramitinti, awana ng'ara first honor rolls list, awana'ertira ng'ara third honor rolls list, ya number one, on'egedam no'di'a pati. Bitia gida, aksumu'du se ti'agida ki'muspel ina koror, a bekl school wa se, ngomu'ra otel school, ra first quarter, egadu fana'asengkang, wangana tengni report card, ewang ra curriculum. E segi da'atraga ni'ra bekl quarter, lotovdi ra eight grade. 30 sometimes, el omeser segidil score. Segidil wa se aktoorte, seto'se akkoror, is the best akmiri, it begins in first grade. N'ditma'angalgra otel chilse, gedoldu gede, karangal ngalga sing mkarang, e momaduni egel giril maduni, e winga tengani. El alchilse segida edi'aga koror. You've taken that away from our students and our teachers. They have no way of knowing how the kids are doing against the curriculum.
Can I, can I repeat? I have one question. I'm looking at the test scores here, the quarterly, I see 40, 31, 59, 50, 60. Did they master the content? If not, what areas did they not master? That's what we should be getting, that's the information we need. A general score like this simply says, the student passed the test, or the student didn't pass the test. That's too general to use in terms of any type of curriculum development.
Minister, this is what we have, we can go back and look at items, and see exactly where they went wrong, and work on those.
Which has not been done.
We don't have any, if you take that away, you don't have anything.
We have plenty of data, that's the issue.
What do you have?
We have the Iowa assessment, which goes into much more detail than this test, which gives very specific areas of content. How many test, how many test questions do they have? How many did the student correct? How many did he get wrong? What are his areas of weakness? That's what we can use without these assessment tests.
Elasalbel endra quarter, ya sumangalga wa 60, eh ng'ara kardra'nganga, ndama' nomre ga semester.
Quarter.
Right, abu'limre'ga quarter, esel al to'vda assessment, ya sumangalga mne'fil, for example, in mo'50. You'd have no time to retest or reteach. You're moving on to the next quarter.
No, no, etia gida, etia gida sel so'dingil sen'era ng'ul, mo'se'et, etia gida sel subdaga ra cap, mesipu'asaken, le'ga'asen'aya, edi'aga dilwa asaken, quarterly iti tiang. Mor asaken, quarterly, eh pick up, segidil, tregal katmukli, olge, edan kalan ngalgalmi. Te'idu datra, first, second, third.
Really, I have scores to show you.
Awerel ra sen'aya waisi, arsen'aya awurul waisi. Ndia'agadilwa asaken, quarterly, el iti ti'al teng, ma'egel uril ng'al, el mu'pan el mertiang, ela'gal bululdige ka'egi. Segida ng'ani'era alurul ku'dongli. Ndia'agadilwa asaken, quarterly, el omu'ra asaken, quarterly, ela'gal omesa egida le scores. Segidunke'ak, n'sen'era ng'alam longui a point out. Wa se ti'agida uspel, egim sel ng'ala'ka, kwa'sen'kang giril ge, we go back, pick up and move forward. It begins in first grade, ewaisil all the way in first grade. Odunil waisi egidil. All the good teachers worked that way, they don't literally turn the page o'iti tiang. Se'agudongli. Ndia'agadil, second quarter, el iti se. Wanna last the slide and then we'll move on? Etia gida omobaramaduni, etia gida a score el al first quarter, tregati te'del ngalga, etia gida report card, great el molabre el alchilse, 75, 75, 75, 77, 77, aywa. N'se'gada esese, tregato'ngara'ra antenta, pa'ilunga eti scores. Can you tell from this that, no'ara learning eti'ra antenta ra first quarter? Can you do that, Minister, with this course in front of you?
Tell that the student in math learned 75% of the content, but that's the only thing you can tell from this. You can't tell where their areas of strength or their areas of weakness are. That's the point we're trying to get across to you. The data from these quarterly assessments is not that useful in terms of finding out where each individual student is.
No, they are, they are. If you had a quarterly, you would tell you that.
It would give you one more number.
No, no.
It would give you a 70, it would give you a 40.
No, I'm sorry, Minister. Tilagida edi'aga ng'ani'era el al time, tregatri student, edi'aga ng'ani'era el al time. Mlesepela sen'ey, dimle'cover a few things, and give a grade, and you would know that. Mla'ha pen.
... Sensei, adigal ultirakla korali. Ak question wasay, mokomkaramik sure toltis akla atengertir. Ah erang ayangala, ma erang alon, ma erang artmao, ma erang korola diosisiu. How can you tell that?
Nga sebemel, ngasabemel wasaya era, ngasabemel wasaya era ayangala diosisiu wa era esramal ubingiwal. Le bekal school, ah malngod adainamik sergi, ma egagidle culture ma, um, askuli. Ah ulman godonge dero uspe asanadai's exam, um, ilgal korali. I don't assume godo, um, len uniformal murabe kalngalga. So for example, ah issues ra, ang esar ah malngod ak schools ramal gayo, masko rang esar, masko orior. Len central schools, ma rural schools, ah malngod adainamik, sma, angod egagidle, um, um, academic levels are parents, sma, who's home and who's doing work with kids.
Malam, malam, omo buro simple wasin, siel adenwa en dinagal aktele en magoror.
Asanadai diosisiu, ma curriculum diosisiu. Ah moa wanai, egagidle scores wasay. Ah segum, ah sebela ngalga angar alon, angar alon, for example, in math, in, in sixth grade, eh, 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 fourth grade level, ya modifrent ra gorora wasa gorora sixth grade, eh, fifth grade level, ah, ah, so ngdiwan yira gap agim help ra adagoror. Ya what, what I've seen wasa, ndimal gayo ra sebela ngalga sixth grade, ya, ya grade level ni alta madhurt grade. Egagidle difference.
Ya, egagidle dijal acceptable more parents. Ndiajal sojal kirabal gayo, burwasin, alika fifth grade and thing four grade level.
I guess scores.
Halibu wasa gara, what actually happened ra ayangana. Sera hayan, malmatrak na school rang ayangal ber orior, ilgal ngalga amner schoola koror. Ngel rulu, do sialbor eighth grade, ra dimlet chen warin mo may, entapra lomtrinaga goror, em ne pasa sebiyor, em lasko sebiyor. Edimle four, manchengaga goror, burwasin, sial ngaran ayangana ra koth school mor segidle mahayan. Etul degatka diosisiu target, benchmark, ma ulmal oral mer oror endesiu.
Teotiko si, teotiko siu el altaim, asanadai di standard.
Ndil segum, ndiajal pursue sensei, el altaim le sial adriarsenso wasi, ela tiaw nyama kma rsel sebe eli, page ranga. Egidamde sir sensei, egidabir tir uspe anyes, il pick up wasi. Ma segum etam la ma oit, il diaga girad degatka wasi. Ngel sensei adiga bera gelsabeel, engel ngalga oba sel bura, moranix sixth grade level, il diaga mokaram madres wasi.
You just said something very important. We're trying to help the teachers pick themselves up, is that correct? You just said that, I believe, right?
Wasay.
Okay, wait, wait, please let me, let me, let me continue. How is giving an outside determined test, that the teacher sees only upon the administration, never sees it again, and then he gets a number put on the children's report card, that is worth twenty-five percent of that child's grade? How is that lifting the teacher up?
Ngagidle sensei ra goror, minister.
I'm, no, I'm asking you, how, how does that lift the teachers up?
Ma wasa, ngagidle sensei ra goror, gorian, wasa, tiagidle korali makes me perform and make sure my kids are doing well, and I must make sure I cover everything that needs to be covered.
So it's a negative reinforcement?
It is a reinforcement. Di tiagidakspada, trike rogul sensei, egal school, magatagatal sensei. Adiajal estatel waseng.
You know, Senator, Senator, I hate to interrupt, but it seems as though we're running into a brick wall. You are obviously in favor of the quarterly assessments, for reasons.
Let me make this clear.
Let me finish, please, for your reasons, I, that's, and that's fine. We have come to the determination that we have other ways of doing this. We're gonna stand here all day, or sit here all day, and argue back and forth on this, but we are not being allowed to present anything about what, why we did what we did. And we're also taking, unfortunately, every, all of the senators' time to issue one issue, when we have a lot of initiatives going on in the, in the ministry now.
Yes.
Which we would love to have the opportunity to meet with you, which we tried to establish meetings with you, and it couldn't work out.
Okay.
That would be a better use of our time to work together, rather than arguing over something that, I don't think there's any way we'll change our mind.
Okay, Minister, let me make this clear. It's not about the korali. You can find another assessment test to do that. Di tiagidla sojal dule merume management team. As a parent, and diajka sojanga school system, il blamke gini wasa sensei angar sel sojalm sel sebeel. Se gidha dijal uwi system. Ti al blam alani, el altse nkorar, eng motogadi portcard ra ngalga. El di teng ra ngalga, ediajka dudel waseng ma ngara kabret ra, ah curriculum. Eh wasay gidde melamol melmalmo. From this day forward, and diajka dudel waseng gal ngalga ngara kabret sergi, eh, gambitan wasa, momoa wanas scores ra ngalga akaros school. By the time they go to high school, engel ngalga morsea al reding uwi, mina tanat. El alak al reding lo wasa school ra ngaramo. El morsea engel ngalga mo tarbasura school, el namodaksa den mokarangi.
And in, in our opinion, the quarterly assessments are not doing that. They're quite simply not accomplishing what you think they are accomplishing. Because they do not give enough data for us to use.
And core elementary school is not one school that speaks for the rest of the school. I would like to show you the scores for the last three years. Our schools are failing. We're in the twenty-two, twenty-two percent percentile. I don't have time to come here and argue with you, I want to show you the data.
Wasay, akmalan senati, la, la, sojal magatakli segidle usalda ngi, li tiagidla dudel system, akmasalda ngi. Ah segum, ngaria besa systema uwi, yang maluwi. Din sojal magatakli segidla wasa segidya, ah, blagatakla minister. Again, sojal lasta minister ak tulitiagid, wasa, sel, olastepoint ra agal egal kamenta, angar sel lasta slide. Abera dvor se, komdimdungel wasa, sensei gidha mokodonge kia, ayar high school, marbilo high school. Trike gidle sensei, agidlo uspe longesertir, ah, dorur tal morur ngi, editil high school, elak mokodonge usetra sensei, dudonge waseng momerin la urir trike gidle sensei. Si sojal magatakli, lakmokodonge kia, nyartelulbesa, gistri ra ngaramlungui, brand new teachers, how are they gonna be able to cover the curriculum, be up to speed on that, se awre reala? Len giriar sensei, in mo wangage gid, guoletin sensei wasay. Arogul sensei, giril morur wangel sensei sebeel cover, egal cover, el morar ngal, adakkuetli, segidha komdasen giril kutmakli. El akmal morsea lasta slide, ah, minister. Sel, tadanaharingi minister, tiagidamde li. I believe in the development of collegial relationship among all members of MOE, ideas need to be openly expressed and discussed. We all must become active participants in the development of our schools. Si sojal dule wasa segid omde li, esera omotobi tiel medera korali, ar sensei, adimlaa, partner tiel diskasyon. Segidha komasen dijal uwi tokoyasukum, ar sensei mutra orior, ediajka partner tiel diskasyonut yang. Esel wa, how will this improve the students' learning with a resounding yes? Anganatya, minister, merume management team, esukudungel wasa, tiel oblam tivir, akudungel wasen, ndiajka bo lungi ra ngalga. Engakangalga ngar koth school, ma gubentriar parents wasay, alum, ndiajka mondarar parents, aralga dingila uwi teng. Ah report card page, blak page, dudingila sa aralga, in every school. Patara principal, wasay, akumisakal average, emudungel waset, egadia kanbalte ngalga. Egadia kan performance aralga, real performance.
We have promote.
Oh, si.
Amisama wasa da da da.
Okay, segidha sojal magatakli wasa segidya, agim uwi same, egagidle minister, sojal supdau. If finally, kidha alban ra standard-based professional certification, il me oldrokringi. A certification system omul may, elak am hold the teacher accountable to the curriculum framework, it's not gonna work. We need to find a way to hold the teacher accountable to the curriculum framework. That's what I'm getting at. Alakal korali ndi uwi, if you have something better.
We agree with your point, and we have a different way of holding the teachers accountable, which we'll be happy to explain to you.
Segidha sojal, I wanna see that, eh, make sure it happen, il sensei selolchis ak. Ya sen, ah, ngalga school wa kaidan ngi, emoral eni. That's what needs to happen. El altaim akmudeng ngaria, ah, sensei ra trasko wasay. Ti al, ngalga xel gubesa akal teng ringi, ngirel bi, egosetekel prening system, yakmam sa eni. Ayar school lu final exam, ayar school dijal final exam. Trike sensei, high school teachers equivalent, will give an exam that's not as robust as someone with more experience and education. And you leave all that to the teachers. It is unfair to the teachers, and definitely unfair to the students. Segidha malsojal magatakli wasay, etrike sensei tir a, mokasa experience atir, amodiajka sebeel lo degatka. Ya student atir, tiagidha mobu. Segidha malsojal magatakli, the students are the ones who will suffer. Segidha sojal wasa, atengertir, amor reflect wasay.
Aralga are already suffering, ah, ulmul tau tau ri ra school, and it's nothing that you've mentioned here. Ke, akumdasal amla obesa ra root cause, eti al korali assessment ta ulmagimle pulor ngi. For example, assume ngalga koth school, ah, ah, rogul ngalga bela wasel tu ra school, eh, the highest score they can get from a teacher, seventy-five percent. The twenty-five already is covered by asanadai, egidle korali, is that fair? Eh, eh, ndra quarter, ma ndiajka teale de we teach, kadi imagine koth school, ilgol talbor ra school. Ndiajka we teach lem lamora gar, and then we're moving on to the next quarter.
Eh, Director, komisasilgo ti, ngagidle sensei ra koth school, ilwa elmsangel ngalga, that's how it should be done. We bring our teacher skill up to par, manseltma ngalga, dhumse, segidle era first grade, that's the determinant of how it's gonna happen all the way.
If that's your purpose, then why grade the students twenty-five percent, and you don't grade the teachers?
Til al decision amil etmokranaramo, even before I became.
It's not working.
Never worked.
Ulurorak dudel ulurorak dudel uluror, we can change that, ndigul akulgori wasay. Aklotu tila wasay, komkara el altaim, el al dangan in school system, blam wasay, ndiajka korali. There's no test. How do we make sure egal teng accurate?
Ah, learning targets, adigangar ngi, asanadai diadigangar ngi, ar sensei, ah, mal maduolchis akal to the learning targets. Egal standard diadigangar ngi. Egel tetelyar sensei al grade erel ang, egal mal simple numbers, tadi breakdown ertel hundred percent. Mlamodiajka adenngas central office emehul wasay, um, kaol sensei rang esar, um, ah, egagidam lettena targets, segidle olchis ak, la, oblemita malaga, emma, ma November five, em test ra ngalga, emgo koth school. Mas segum, ndiajal odonge ngalga, dijal suva egal subalel, em, ah, November, emma, ma teste, etwob de report card ngi, we're done with that quarter. Ndiajka teale de we teach. Eh, selva benyamal meras central office, ah, mulwasay, egal korali, agidlo uspe, informa instruction, se, agidlo morur ngi. And di egal korali for many years, ah, dijal used as inform, informing instruction, ma professional development, they're used as summative. Hmm, grade ra ngalga, emlamo, ndra quarter, mokadwe're moving on, and na, ediajka se de we teach, segidha issue. Egal standard diadigangar ngi, osis akla, mal diro si siu, osis akla, mal diro si siu. Um, ndinglamodak sidde assessment al holder aralga, il grade atir, that's the only part of the remover ngi, keta bay uspe ngi resource.
Akbo wasa gidde, ulitra, Senator, sangpanganiaswal. Eh, open oral, momerek. Director, akmal, malmasanga, ah, molgori ngi, emral, longbaran akmasing tiel systema, emral sebeel, dingora, sel gubesengin, mobenefit ra ngalga, dim, tadi tilo drablirir, eteligibel, lu uwi. Akumdasap public schoola, wal, ndiajka girala ngalga ma oit. Lingakamari member agim ngara schoola, Maristela, ah, ulmakne refuse somela ra test ra, Apollo High School. Ah, mllo, teligblotakla, akwasitirga, mlamma yegal, yegal baby ra public school, ah, mlamma ensera yegal, letetra el busta, ah, systemi. Sojal masanga, kwasay ngalga etwob ra ngar alon, ah, diosisiu wa level ra comprehension ngi, ma ngalga etwob orior. Ndishel dabor tila ayidle, kwasegada, kada ngartila, eng mosabeel ngalga, medal two years, se nyagol ma master ra, ma ndi uwi. Ndii, is that the right way to do this? Akkora, legamulgo, kwasen, ndiajka giram ready move on. Mengal sensei amora pace sergi, etra el, mengamo sel, molmu tras summer school, menggiril ngara school. Hmm, akmadengakmasa, ah, school, il public school, ah, di setra standard, etsegum, ngaria ngalga singasel, maybe segidle metma parents. Lindiajka, ndiajka sebeel ngartyang rowe, akumdasu kwasen, kada, kada morsea al pace sensei, lengal sensei al omestri gal ngalga, malkmitut, emral mori segidlo kora kla karos egal school, maybe, akteo ger segidde, maybe.
No, the, the issue with that, ah, I was saying, ndiajka de dehul wasay, um, um, ngalga, ah, failing, egidangara pace sensei, kada ulmore egel, ah, the way we evaluate, ah, osis akla, kadr mutra egidle four elements. Hmm, sensei, ngal sensei madangali itiel gan ten, ta ngal sensei maduol delivered tiel instruction, il use a lesson plan, egagidha, ah, those, ah, do, evaluate ra se classroom. Melasel, for example, egal scores, erel ang, sel tobede agim uspe el drive, egagidle orir al year. Ya agim lamatigil waseng ngar ngi, ah, weaknesses ra sensei lolchis akla, angalga dijal comprehend etta move on. Eh, egagidha agim morur el altaim, we're pacing back, eh, within the school year, ya egagidle coaching, ah, embedded professional development, and ngalasela classroom. Ma giol, agamesa sensei lolchis akla struggle, so we quickly fix it at the end of the day. Eh, egagidha etwob erel altaim, len, agim bilasagidle dara, and that's driving the school year. Eh, egagidha tetalela assessment isel de tobeda, tobeda amarts, eh, egidha mitel central office, ah, June, kadr mulaplan, is start a school year.
Di, obaga al morsea giddele, like you said, ayawa given ra, ah, giddele di, taratarra. So, segidlo guk point, kwasese sel korali, how do you know, kwasegamla, kamla mit sam, osisiuwa, standard, malkmoba, and more anexa subject. Mengang sebeel etwob de ra, eh, eh, kwasen, you gonna take your time, eh, address il ang. Mengangsel, momerek, ah, one year, ndirigakal, osuba egar ogul, giril musubra de grade. Kawadiregal guk mo hold bagar baby ra student. Ah, ulman ngaria, grade, grading system, kamru tal assessment, and then egamo madengakmasitangari aralga, guk mal bilort yang, mokadomo siga extra help al morti. Ndindiajka, mforsona, kwaset, tigal baby la mal guk, eh, tigal sebeelri, malkmaha hold up, eh, tigal baby ra ngalga.
No, that's not how it works. Ah, ulman importantel wasegada go, obagi, etchega, egagidle osis akla, il mutra egidle four elements. I wanna say, ah, instructional arrangement, and so, elasel tobeda ayawa, ngar ngi sel individual score ra ngalga, ngar ngi sel class wide. Eh, ga, omesra, ah, grade la aralga agem, esetichera ngar alamla ngesertigal rogul ngalga. Etigal ngalga, most likely, eng, etatwob de rowe, eh, ga, omesertil ga rosa grade atir, segidhe nyamo important instructional arrangement, rga, legomir aralga, olchis akla. Ya gole, ga, mora egidle sixth grade, for example, right, end of the year. Ndil segum, aralga ngaria, four, ma five, ma seven, eh, within the group, eh, segidha, moda alba sensei, lo mir aralga, instruction li, ngirimel, momdingel mulwasay. Tige gidde ngalga, dijal, gutmakla, asela classroom, il moda alba wasay. By the end of the school year, ngirir ngalga, galnamo sixth grade rowe. Eh, eh, segidha agim morur ngi el altaim, ndiajka dura seka duet.
Point duel tegen, andi komdasu kwasen, kilogomlir ille assessment, eh, tiel egidra sensei, le, you're expecting, ah, tigal sensei, il mortil ayidle, mosadre ngi, il maluwi, metmuradi nga. Di onyerunga, my last point, eh, chair, chairman, kwasikilo, kilogodatranirawan el school. Kilogodingilaawan el school, let's say, me yuns, ngheri, sel aural, omengela, principal, kwasigame de sat yang. Len, akukal, segum, kada, eh, eh, liste mesa one year, emesa improvement ti tigal in comparison. Akkora di, komdasu ngi, kwasikilo godo kora, angar trial basis, egadama masa imo, emmergo muul, eng, cloud change, el, komdasa egal baby ataim, eng, emral meri la change, bakti dule she, emmergo kama.
Okay, um, this system has been in place for ten years. Our students' achievement has not improved. It's that simple. We have an alternative which gives us better data which can be used. You're asking us to rely on tests which have no demonstrated reliability or validity. And I can show you, for example, later on, how that can, how that can confuse things. The issue is this. It has not helped our students learn.
Minister, malmeri ngaksem donok pertila, emdukmaset yang, adiajka uspeel, ramlamolastetianis, burwasin, kama gageeder, agidim tura orion, ra egan, omerek, altruy ra. Akmal, akmal respect, rga, gala amla same chance, ndindiajal kama merogua, amlar wasa same chance. Me, please, ndakamohod, odul wasay, letangariya, ngaregel bela, emlatwob, ah, imor ngi, ambassador, ottilo dra, Stanford University, student, tra chairman. Me, malakadohod, odul wasay, aktio langi, tel kwasen, kada masanga orior, nding, kadr oguil, madengakmasen, kada swada uwi. Ndindiregal, schoola, diregal, meri la di de change, maki lo komkuk mesaawan el, el school, eh, gorra trial, eh, yang.
Trial, trial ra ngarang.
Tiagidde mos, mosubre ngi, Director, ngakadiajktuk, tiadiblem change, etiel, mokadiajka korali, el mora, egal mora egar ogul school. Kilogomkukle pikraawan el, el heris ngere, eru lim, kada masang, eh, komu ra implementer ngi rogi.
Over ten years, eh, is enough, is enough trial. Aralga ngamina schoola every day, ndiajka dudel wasay, ah, egal school sebelo, are failing, edo rola pilot at the trial, we've done a lot of trials.
Ah, k, k, kame, Director, kamlara, kamlara public school, amregel, kamlara private school.
Nah, public schools.
Kamlara public schools. Eh, ga, ulman diregal digge traditional, yagamla schoola hawai, ma, diosisiuwa, curriculum ra, high schoola hawai, ra public school, ma bela. Ndiajka amal kla karos aktio, langi, tel kwasen, etsegum, yang amal cloud change, maki lo komkuk trial, yamna, suggesting, and di, I hope, eng uwi la morur ngi, eh, correct. Ndii omchensel ngi, ah, sebeel di awa ra, eh, minister, ngaka, swada changes, sel, kada malswa, ngakamakla minister, malswa ka change. Di, that's where, ah, ulman ngaria wa private schools, mangarang, a challenge away gigi. Kada mora, ilang, tamlar uli, egar amregel, el mora egal egidle elkong, ngarkeel school, il tahara we, emomor, mandiregal, buto ngamla fe.
Ha, le, le, let's just focus on scores, ma, ah, egidle teira aralga. Akkotil kritikal, el drive orior, ah, scores ra ngalga, meras schoola recalcils, eh, egagidde de address. Eh, egay, eh, eh, drive, egal orior.
Akmal, omengemo tila, ngum, akma, I hope, eng oriori, eh, mui laktimle, aska baby ra question, sel, loger kwasen, komlegan sidre, egagidde, biere, tila, audusui, kama ngara, obisel el altaim, swa idu, hope, eng, ma orioraktim.
Aralga bela, aralga bela rowe, our students bela, adiajal, adiajal, ndiajka time, el, ngaramentry. Aralga are being sent to schools to learn, namodiajka, ndiajka, mlam, namodiajka se de pilot.
Well, ndigamokaram, madengakmasen, mlam, master, assume, ndiajka korali assessment, ngakukmasasa, egidde point, eh, sel korali, mengaria, kla karos ra opinyonsa, tila, egedan beri.
Ha, ha, lekso di. So, okay, egagidha standard, del truy, and then etiagidha, giddele korali assessment. Eh, goruli tel korali assessment, eh, every three quarter, eh, goruli assessment, yes, most per ngi, wasay, oh, aralga de tegir el gear. Mas segum, ngaria, lit otul ngal, eh, em release el assessment, eh, it's not like, ndiajka same no spey, most per ngi, em, em, omesel wasa ngalga tegir el gear, em, eh, game sis, balosis, alol, ser ngalga, mama specialist, enra BCI. Um, ndi, la, gamutial teng ra ngalga, il, il, assessment, el, mo grade ra ngalga, ah, ndra quarter. Eh, egar ogul assessment, tegidlo uspe, informa instruction, ma practices, and ndiajka giril grade.
Maluwi, eh, maluwi explanation ngi, a point, maybe, ah, gamitil, omengela chairman, ngar tiang kwasen, ar sensei, tir a implemented tiel soam, kommular obis, the redil, mokmokpertila, and if it's a resounding yes, then I'm with you.
Ar sensei, ar sensei, egar ogul public school, adiajal oror, ra, ah, sawala, central office. Ah, right now, a central office has been imposing this assessment in the school, so, kama ngaria, central office, eh, package, assessment, ra school rang esar. Kada mlamutial assessment, omesas sensei, mengomora arani.
Ndittil ayidha, blam, ne process.
Egal, egal, egal grading, ah, ma simple numbers, egel wasay, ah, akmetitil lo mi, yang, at twenty-five percent, eh, waseng.
Okay, Director, komdasal amega, komdasal amega, point, rga, mong, ndi uwi lak, malkametilang, and I hope, eng, ma oriori, Chairman, no, no.
Masauli, di, toting sa sojal clarify, ah, simple numbers, ah, dijal wasay. Ar sensei uspe omso dele, egidle simple numbers. Ah, ulngitambo, male, sel, they're not, onyerung, ndili, il koramal, wasay, you will fix that at, at the end of the day by coaching? Til adiajal wasay, it took me three years. Ndiajka, wasay, komdimol coach, ah, sensei, eh, fix that, it takes a while.
Ndiajka kwasen, fix, eh, let me correct you. Ndinaktuk kwasen, agidhi fixing ya enda de, what I mean, god, you're an educator, makan dangli tiang. Agin ngar, asela classroom, lo ventre, ah, sensei. Ya segum, agim, agi, osis akka tiel masadra tu, emlamusal mo bobai, ya gi stop, eh, help presensei, segidha ogul gorni. You have to remember, wasan, ndiasel alomesa scores, emdingel wasa, aralga ngamina schoola recalcils, emru gidde goralgo, kada mokadu ra sensei, mangarangklil, mangarangklil. No, agidha ulman ngaria ayawa assessment, eh, gay, ah, information of uspe. Ndiajka dorar, radalongle la school, mokadu ra sensei, egal ayawa assessment, egel standard di assessment, ah, scores ra ngalga, is, is scores, ah, sensei, and the way they're teaching. We have information, el help, agidde, ndiajka dorar, radalongle, egal school, ma sensei, dudonge du ra individuals. Ah, scores ra goror doesn't help my work. The server, aralga school, bela rowe. Mang, please, emera, a central office, do meeting, le, right now, this meeting is biased. Kadingartilang, eh, di masa, eh, ala amam masa. I'm gonna show you our data, el altaim.
Akutakmumskemate al, emukua isar gau. Ah, schoola, bulur bela, ah, giril mokadu ra sensei. Giril mokadu ra sensei. Ndiajka, tilal, tokol blam, wasay, ndakamukara radolora school, ma, kua isar gau. That's how I know we need to work with teachers, they need to have some ownership, eh, egal tokol, kama amsa gau.
You assume, el mulastekma, madengi mokadu ra sensei. Galidha shifta, wal ngartyang, magerani, ndiajka, ndiajka ra dara, egiddele specialist, enra central office. I, I have said, wasay, um, the school have shifted. Ar ogul specialist, ah, mora school, editow da, egel ngar ngi, emor egel school. Ndiajka ra dara, ngara central office.
Ndiajka, ndiajka.
No, ma, ndiam, sumulhasan, madengi mokadu ra sensei, we talk to the teachers all the time, and we're working with teachers and principals. We are partners with principals, and esama, meras school, eh, dijem informa principals.
Uh, Frere, halibulmak, trikay, kismataan.
Sela, Chairman, eh, Minister Maluwi, tutal merga, ma, trikal, Director, sa ga, tangokat tiang, eh, orangs, etiel, el conversation, agidde, eh, goramomel aswar sel, ngakadiajka, ah, malganggesten, ah, ora, tokora, education, uh, basically, ak, uh, I'm, I'm a pro change. Eh, eh, sojal make sure, akmase, ah, change, el, dongotmokra, al sel egal institutions, ra kabalmenta, is well communicated to the people who are involved in the process. Segidha, mainel konsera, ngak, eh, Minister, and, and the way, uh, you're presenting your, uh, theories, ma, egel outcome, ra assessment, serkamiu, el giril, egal namomerek, el ten years, uh, instructional system, ra instructional, uspe ngi, il mel mutra el altaim. I'm sure, komla mesa deira, and, and you probably have come to a conclusion, akmase, tiel, el, el, current system, ra korali assessments, uh, perhaps not working as much as we want, el, achieve, egel gor, education again. Mang, ngakadingartyang, eh, esdi, sojal, komlasaying, ulgum, um, um, sel approach, il, that you have made the decision, il, to make this change. Ulgum komlasab il, malubeng, kom, taligibel momsi si auriri, il communicate, ringil, mora, ar sensei, ma, adara school, tir a implemented tiel system. And I think, eh, ndiajka ngartia, el al, el, aidara, akmasing, ngaraw, right, mang ngaraw, wrong. Len, base, egel guk meeting, rga, ma, lo ventre, ah, ar sensei, ma, adra egal school, eng wal, klo, confusion, eh, Minister. There's a, a confusion, akmasing, ah, baby ra sensei, akarosa level, ra, comprehension, etir, tokora, and you know, ra, guk, sel, overall, el manpower, agidra, adabelao, sel, lidi siar, adal, tir available, mo sensei, ah, mallimited. We have very limited number of people, esab il sensei. Mang, ah, domesra, a population, ar sensei, embatoka, ah, the high school graduate, ma, ah, dijal sal, mal, full education, etir, kada, akidhal di, hartilmo, sensei ra elementary school, maygal. Mangidhal, momesese, egidde, guk, available resources, segidra, human resource, emlasamal, ma, at, at chestar ngil, mo, mobile, ser ngil, morti al change. Len, if you're gonna impose, eh, egagidde, goras, uh, a stop, as a standard, er, adal, tir amo implement, eh, egal standard, alakal, sebeel, comprehend. Ar adal tira mo implementa aiga standard, ala kala, asil il comprehension, a change. Engmo, tomo, maringa tira, a change. So, it's good that you're making, uh, these positive changes. Ndii question akmasa. Is the implementation gonna be, uh, implemented as, as we, we would hope, and se aige de. El level ak, uh, implementation, asawal achieve ngi. Se aige da, main el konsera na kamiting, I believe akmasa. Um, cloud tutalel, uh, as, as a manager, uh, tial organization. Engirem el identify a change that needs to be made. Eh communicate ringil mora regular. Ndiya kadi il dalongoliwa, ngaram management tim, emdula se. Em impose ra change el mora, egal, em expected til, di accept ringin, el, el, el deliver el morsel expectations. I believe in, there, there will be facing, uh, some challenges, ra aiga l, lguk. Expected the chances, el kamea impose el morti. Mang dasen cloud tutalel, minister, el, el girede l communicate aiga l information. Uh, a director agama, il, masa de aige de deira, il, that we, you have put together in your presentation. Akumra akmasa with those data, omal mor madriya sensei, ma, our staff ra school, ma adal tira multauta aiga lurior. Em explain aige de, el, el conclusion, ramiro aiga deira. And to more understand, emosipiril, comprehend aiga aige de besel change. Sel dim come up with this, this is a huge change, minister. And they sell dim communicate ringil di by email. Eh, ma adal, el bol katota de, el request, uh, uh, omsodele aiga l, you know. Our baby sensei akmromamakmasa. Uh, communication, emlorti akmasa, alsumaniama questioner parents, they can, they can call the minister directly. But, minister, you have to understand. Ndiya kala, ev, every parent, asil il gold directly, mora minister, elongo do dura minister. They wanna talk to the people, el gorra, talgibel asil il. El, ndiya kalsal mal ngarwaba, authority tirmal, bohul fit, like they're wasting people's time, masa, amgeka na il mondarte. So, those are little things, and gumdasen girel. Management, el take to consideration when you communicate these changes. Akti swakal di, ikwe aige de ring, uh, sel gam, moga do our baby our sensei, ma our baby our, our parents. Te direk, lwal goradi, eska aiga de questions, el gorawal. Il, indigatikmasa, ndiya kala clear el communication, emra. Uh, our sensei, ma, our adal tira ultauta aige de besel system, blam, adaptaring. Sula.
Your point is well taken. I understand what you're saying. Thank you.
Yeah, Senator Inavo, please.
Mal unil, al tutawe minister, ma rekal management ra school. Akmadengal asing, mal maring laureliu. Especially on mal involve bar toko lad. Ma, kumra angal wase, every family ra plural belau. Every student, tam, uh, teachers, are all involved in this whole change. Mang, every change is, uh, de albiot. Um, I only wanna say wase, uh. Um, aku marangal waseng ungil tel change. Because, um, akmal ngara board ra schoola, STA schools. Eh, we rely on the Iowa test, el assess, el wase, wanganarangalga, wangananga teachers, especially teachers. So, we know wase, trigal makatakatangal sensei, el lamom madangalia. Atetele lalulis ak, wase, maralosis akliangalgal, to do very well, to have a very good score, uh, Iowa test. Are really the most effective sensei. So, a trigal student missionaries who comes to teach for a year temporarily. Trigayegi ya, te kalsal, mal mssisi ascore student certir. And, uh, so, akmal madengeal wase, uh, uh, tiga l sensei ra plural belau. Asabiril mo, mal maduololis akler sel, wase, ak mara usis akliangalgal mo, unil ascore ngira Iowa test. Because Iowa test, uh, standard al measure, uh, bekal ngalga schoola blul adrogi. I mean, especially US, ma. Mang, if you teach a child, el mosapil unil at, atengar ngira Iowa test. It means you have raised the standard of learning, arangalga. So, um, nga madengeal asing, mal cloud tutalela change. Undi, a direkal mutal cloud tutalel, how do we do the change? Ling gire ra adrogu il wonge lteal change. So, that's the challenge that you're faced with right now. Eh, the madengeal waseng, ar adaku ra bekikla, they're not so sure, wase, tiasabilurior. Ndii, from my experience, uh, ngara board ra school for a long time. El guk mal lospera Iowa l, l measure, uh, our sensei, ma ngalga, nga madengeal wase, it would, it can work out. Mang, ngire de mo taru drogu. Because we're, we're on the same boat. Ma, akmadanglia director, el, el maybe facing challenges, el waseng, marangata implementa besel system. But I think, eh, together, we can, we can make it happen. Ma, akpaimal di, maringa suliu, eh, madengeal wase, it takes a lot of work to make changes. Mang, ndiya kalkol itutarangmiu. Mal mo find the way, eh, nga madengeal wase, tiga l sensei ra belau, very talented teachers. Mang, if, if they can be, um, trained to teach the, the Iowa. Uh, the students to do very well on Iowa test. I think we raise the standard of both our teachers and our students. Mang, uh, akmal, al maringa sula me minister, for taking on the challenge to change. I know it's a big task. Eh, albebe leng atid, ra kutluul, lakadokram, taktel change. But I think it will work out for the best for all of us, so. Um, akmal di kongse aige de tele, eh, o isase aige. Emal wase, we will support the change. We have concerns, big concerns, but we need to work all those out. Sula ngi minister.
Sola, Senator Inavo. Albo Vice Chairman, eh, Minister, kibiuskmati al, mang kabera, a power point.
Mal unil maswelbo, eh, merkmi rogu, sula ngi chairman ati al. Ndiya kaga mal, akmal orangsagal, aldo du rogu, dirigal mal mo. Tra l morsel point ra education. Helping students succeed. Ega kasa begalu, uaisakwa se, I've been a failure in a lot of times in my life. Mang, aige de failure, gaga dirigal, meski da te al, moga do assess ra, klangari kid. Ling, uh, yes, everybody wants their children to succeed, and diya kala adal migisa tutay akmasa, swakon failure. And ding gire de mo, honest, terkid akmasa. Uh, ngariya aiga litatulaurior, el gitar mensel al sils. Edi regal lo, marangal akmasa, uh, background ra kha sports. Um, ndimla kagora, ndiya kasa begal start tra game, etensa any rules, ra blalomo ulaklo golu. When I start, uh, 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 school year, eda ondalani gedetensa sesel tal atel. That's gonna create problems. Mang, nga kadektu wasen mknit or unil, whatever you guys decide, dagmea ungaran atel togoi. Ngaka di gulgoniak, basingire de l talgibel motoklornguth, emunil adu ulbekla ad. Le, adal, lolngosel gumiil posa tial rogi il togoi, a, te rege de imomiu. Ya la ga saingetir al sesel tal togoi, that's, segida creation of te rogi il argumente ela. Le, nga kadektu unil, mama kitlang, gumiu ya professional, ngasel tal urior. Ndiese klo, ndingal, ar adrogu il, mo on board ra oldas. Magada plana ringil gire la next school year, mesi begal take off, on the right foot. Instead ra, on our, ral, ledetral create, so, we're like, creating chaos as we go along. But ndi unil, ndiya kala problem. Adi problem akmasa, tiga l adrourio lobong gumiu. Elakal on board. Ngakut, maringa ngia, esera kots. A diya kalsaba gal tomeliaro, ak, akmomringa tinga gra player. Nding, ndiya kalsaba gal tomeliaro, uningal player, le, le, tor de loral, and diya kaya gimousa golu. Ndigi atimal gimkotsa tiri. So, gumdasen, it's, it's little things, yes, maybe it's really good. Yes, we understand where you're coming from. Nding gire lguk momklorongmiu, you need to understand, we're working with people. Ar adha dirigal ngod alduswi, they need to understand more detail before we move to the next level. Ling, gotel, biot, adamektema dosa da deira, ma rogu lto goi. I understand that. Ya taragot, l challenging, sel dangara outside el mer belau. Kedondasukmutel bela, imisilbagatim, ra bato gult goi. So, we brush ourselves, el mopusa aiga l, de seder du label may, ma, allem seder bladan may. Emomringi leri gi da ovre lo ventre ar af. Gi da ovre lo ventre ar af. Er, adha ngariya certain level, etta move el mora next level. Segida dimne swakal mulgurngi, ling, yes, nga kama dange, ready, we are worth, aige rogu lto goi. Ndindiya kalsaba gal umra, akmasa, gau omohod adu urak. Without listening to me or hearing me, and saba gal guk orangsar gau. Teyang a di human nature. Aktrat tingek momondai, ek, decide shataun, and diya kuwarangsar gau. Lo meru watu sen, diya kuwarangs. Mang, baby ra toora alda du, bela, saba gal goram, magasil mortal alda du, ling, ndiya kala kulu aseng who's wrong or who's right. Yes, we understand, akmasa, you're trying to create, taguk omondasunil togoi. Adi dolgurniak, akmasa, everybody lobong gumiu. Are they on the same boat? Mama kit, omdu lo asa kedamlam, garokol, wangya, artalan, dalokol, aloiter teyang. Elakalodongiak mutama garam, segida cloud tutalel. Ling, I'm sure, gidrogu ngar teyang amal dimde ngi, mal diklu nyolirangalige. Esagots, nga, dimla kagod olgumdasun, dimla kabelgula gold medal or anything. Agulumdasun ngel adlit, kumgarangan, may ge rogu, telang tingilaklo golu, may ge lguk mesi begal lodar, sel muraklangari. So, I hope engwaso begal guk gorra cementa sesera aiga lto goi, ling, I respect you, eh minister. I know, gamlela hiring, ma yulmesa aiga ldeita, may ge rogu, you are qualified educator. But we're in Palau, we need to work with Palauans, we need to understand how people work. To move el mora next level, one step at a time, gumdasen cloud tutalela, daloram, rule, am, cloud steps. Eda may create ra moral confusion ra bulung. Segida uktimne swakal seringi, urangasuri ra te al. Sula ngi minister.
Sowle, minister, me kungitem, seresel presentation omigu. Kam, mayutangal itutitial. Oh, maybe no asortrisa sel itutitia. Thank you. Bonimara.
Little disappointed that we're only getting at this time to be discussing one item. When we have a lot of things which were going on in the ministry that we'd love to share with you. Um, and I hope we can set up at a time where we can get together because these are all parts of a puzzle. And it's not the, the, the quarterly assessment test, that was one part of it. It falls into, there are a lot of other parts, all working together. Uh, and it's important that everybody has an opportunity to talk about that. Now, the, the, the first obvious thing when you look at this chart, these are the Iowa assessment test scores. Um, and you can see that in the year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, uh, our scores are in the twentieth percentile. That means that our average student here is scoring above only twenty percent of the rest of the nation. Those are not good scores, they're not scores we should ever be pleased with. Our students are capable of much more, I know that. We can, they can do that. But apparently, there are things which, uh, have been done, which are not helping them improve. And so, we talked about change, and there's change, there's change coming. And I want everybody to understand that, and I hope we can all work together to make that change come through. And I, I understand what, um, you're saying about communication and being patient. And that, those are valid points and things which we'll certainly consider, and you can never communicate too much. And perhaps we should have communicated more with the teachers. Uh, but again, that's lessons learned. So, right now, what I'd like to talk about is just the, the new direction the MOE has taken in, uh, regarding the quarterly assessment and its full impact on quality of instructional delivery. I want to think, make things some, some things very clear. This does not affect the high school. The high school assessments are, have not been touched. This is only for grades one through eight. And it is not elimination of any quarterly assessment. It is simply the stopping of the central office driven assessments being given to the teachers to grade and then return. And then adding that as a fif, twenty-five percent of the student gr, grade. That's what has been stopped. As we looked at the school back in September, or late August, very late August. Um, tried to do an assessment of our resources and what we stand on. And how well our students are being served. So, if we look here, this next slide. Um, this is our teacher qualification distribution. We have twenty-five percent high school diploma. Forty-eight percent with a two-year college diploma. Twenty-two percent with a bachelor, and four percent with master's degrees. Now, normally, teachers cannot start teaching until they have a bachelor's degree. So, we have seventy-five percent of our teachers technically not qualified to teach. And as I, if, as you said, everybody knows, our, um, pool is rather small. And to be honest, our payment schedule for teachers is totally inadequate, and we're trying to address that. And hopefully, we'll be getting that to, uh, you in the very near future, to try and improve the teacher salaries. There has been some movement, uh, from the teacher with high school diplomas into the, um, AA program. And that's as a result of the agreement which they've made, that within X number of years, they will get their degree, or else that will be the end of their termination. So, but basically, the, the issue we have to address here is that. Our schools need to improve. We need to help these teachers, and I think one of the first things we obviously looked at was our human resources. And we saw, we have teachers who have no degree and who have never taught, being placed in the, in the schools in, in August. How can we help? Um, actually, we, we can, I believe this was in our very first, um, leadership meeting came up, and, um. Director Maul and Director Kilconan and myself, uh, were looking at saying, well, we have a large number of highly qualified teachers in our main office. And perhaps it would be best for them to go into the schools as mentors and to help those teachers who are not quite so qualified. And that's what the outreach program started as. Now, in order for them to do that, then we had to address the quarterly assessment test. Because the quarterly assessment test is one of their, uh, not primary, but it's a large function that they have to do. They have to develop quarterly assessments for every grade and every subject area. Those assessment tests then need to be, um, photocopied, printed, packaged, delivered, then administered, and returned, and scored. So, it's time consuming. So, our timing is also an important element here. If we look at this next slide, um, this is the school calendar, this is the current calendar. We have, the blue days are, um, instructional days, the yellow days are holidays, and the red days are assessment. You'll see, we had two assessments in the month of August, and that was the Palau, I believe, English language learning pretest. Then we have, uh, three days at the end of October, those were the quarterly assessments for the first quarter. And then we had, uh, two more days in September. Which, no, I'm sorry, November, I believe that's the Pacific, was it, Pilna? Pilna, Pilna test, which is only given once every three years, thank goodness. Um, and then again in December, uh, we have the quarterly assessment test, three more days. And then in March, we have two, two tests, that's the Palau language English assessment post test. And then in, um, April, we have the Iowa, which takes three days, and then we have the Palau achievement test, which takes all five days. And I believe is primarily aimed at grades eight and ten. Then finally, the, again, in the early May, we have three more assessment tests. Twenty-six days out of a hundred and eighty-six day year is taken with assessment. That takes us down to a hundred and fifty-four days of instructional time. Which again, we lose some more because of state holidays, et cetera, et cetera, which are not on this calendar. So, those are, that's valuable time. And so, we had to then try and determine at what value is this causing? Uh, you know, there are ways of doing it differently. The idea of maybe taking those twelve instructional days currently being used for quarterly assessment and using those as instructional time. That's a significant. That's a significant amount of time. That's like adding two weeks to a school year without telling anybody. And when we look at the validity and the reliability of some of these tests, it really caused some concerns. This one was a big one for me. Oh, that's the wrong one, I'm sorry. Let me go back. Where did I go? I shouldn't have done it left-handed. This one, this is the math assessment test for all grades last year. And you'll see the average scores are, oh, in grade one, they're 70s. Grades two, 70s. Grade three, 60s. Four, grade four had a bad year, 60s and 50s. Grade five, in the 50s. Grade six, in the 60s. Grade seven, in 60s. And grade eight, in the high 60s, some 70s. Now, based on that result, I want to just focus on the eighth grade. The eighth grade had an average score of their quarterly assessments over all the four years of all the students in math of about a 67%. Now, if you assume that the 67% is the average score, then you can fairly well assume that a large percentage, half or more, are going to be above that and half are going to be below that. Does that make sense so far? So that the distribution of your scores should be evenly distributed around that. So what happened then is then we take the Palau Achievement Test in May. And in the math, the passing score is 65. So you'd be pretty comfortable in making a prediction that about 100 of these kids are going to pass this test. Well, that's not what happened. Of the 200 students who took the test, 11 passed. 189 students failed the test. Now, something is wrong. Something is terribly wrong here. In one of these tests, they can't be that different. Because both of these tests have not been standardized and they've not been tested for reliability or validity. They're tests which are made, and they're made with the best of intentions. But there's something wrong with these results. Now, that posed a huge question mark for me. I met with the specialist, and they had no real answer as to what had happened here. So I turned it over to Director Kilconan. And she went and investigated. I'll let her explain that a little bit later as to what we found. So, the, well, I'll go ahead. Brief summary is that in their findings, they found that we're using the Singapore math. We use it all the way through. In the sixth grade, between the sixth grade and the seventh grade, there's a transition booklet. Is that correct? Sixth and seventh grade. And we hadn't been using that. For nine years, nobody noticed we hadn't been using that. So it was causing this huge gap between our sixth and seventh grade in terms of the material they were being taught and the material they were covering, not caught by any of the achievement tests. The achievement tests look okay. So the question is, how can this happen? And what can we do about it? Because that placement test is used for high school placement. So of our, and surprisingly not, or not, not all those good scores came out of Cororau Elementary School. Ibele Bang had the highest percentage of scores doing really well. We had two teachers who ended up getting six of the total 11. So we want to talk to those teachers and see what kind of magic they have because there's something very right going on there. But the issue here is that we have too great a discrepancy between our quarterly assessments and our Palau Achievement Test. It's hard to explain that. Okay, so what we did then is we need to look very carefully then, as we talked about assessment a lot. There are two types of assessment which we use. And excuse me if I'm going to bore you, but it's important. The assessment which we use as educators primarily is called formative assessment. Now, these can be tests, they can be papers, they can be participation, but they're all designed to help students learn, help them to achieve, to form their learning. Hence the word "formative." The second is summative. Summitive means, as this name implies, it's a summary. In other words, it's a snapshot. It takes a picture of where you are and says, that's where you are. And that's it. And we move on from there. There's no going back. You can use it that way, but we were not using those tests in that way. Now, the Iowa test is a summative evaluation, except we are using those results in a formative manner to be able to identify student weaknesses and strengths and go back and helping them progress. That's the key element we're trying to get a hold of here. Now, the question as to the value of the relative test, the achievement test, as has been pointed out, gives us a percentage of a score on one test. That's it. Achievement test, the first quarter, you take it, you get a 75. That's your achievement on that. And that's just factored into your grade. With that number, it doesn't identify anything else. It simply identifies the percentage of questions you got right. In order to do any type of analysis, these people would have to go through item analysis of every student, every test. There's no way, can't be done. Whereas the Iowa does it for us. The Iowa test, when we get those results, as I'm trying to bring up here, and I apologize for the quality of this. This is a... This is a class summary sheet. It has, again, I've taken the names off. But this is a real score received here. And as you can see, it has, it's hard to see, obviously, I'm sorry. The math, and has different subtests of each math test. And it gives you the subtests. It doesn't just give you a math, it gives you the test. And there's computation, word problems, and all these different elements as you saw on the grade. So it breaks those down for the teachers. So you have an idea of student A, B, what their score is in the subtest. That's just the beginning. The next one is a real key. Now, this is the individual performance profile that every student who takes the test, we get a copy of this. Now, you'll see at the top, it has the listing of all the subtests. And then it has the standard score, which enables this test to be scored and compared to other standardized tests. You can compare these across tests. That's not something we'll probably do much of here. It also then has the percentile rank and the stain line rank. And then the tables, the charts off to the left or to the right, which are pointed out from zero, those from zero, that's the percentile ranking. With the first line coming down as 20th percentile, the second line coming down as the 50th percentile, the average, that would be the average, and then the third line being the 75th percentile. And you can see that this particular student is scoring around the 20th percentile, lower than the 20th percentile. So he's below our average. But that's not the point. The point is, that's the kind of information we have readily available. Then down below, you see all of those different breakdowns. Those are subject skill areas. Sometimes we call them standards and benchmarks. And these are the ones that the Ministry of Education recommended this test because these standards and benchmarks most closely represented the standards and benchmarks that we have as a part of our curriculum because it's the common core curriculum. Now, you can see that there are a lot of them, a lot of different areas. And you see the same type of ratings. They give us the ratings, and they give us the bar graphs on the side. Those are ones that if the bar is to the left, that means that's how far below everybody else you are. And if the bar points to the right, we don't have any on this one, that's how much above everybody score. Because what this test, what it gives us is the number of questions, the number of questions that student answered in each single category, how many they got correct, how many everybody else got correct, and what's the difference between those two. Now, that's data we can use. That's data we can use to improve our curriculum. That's the information that we have available now. And we have had available for the past three, four years, as the Iowa has been given. But it's never been used as much as it should be used. It has to be used. This is a great opportunity. And we've started on that, as Director has said. We're using the data to try to make changes to improve the students' education. And we're basing that on what the student's achievement is. It's not, it's not just guessing. We're not just taking their average score. We have their score on every single listing of subject area within the subgroups. So you're talking about individual test items. It's an item analysis, which we can't do. The item analysis here, doing this by manual means here would be way too much. And so this, they get sent to us, and these test scores are available. They should be given out to the parents. They never have been. I can testify as a parent, I never received these scores. They're not secrets. These are important things for parents, teachers to know about. And we need to start using them. They're not good right now. And it's not a happy thing to show. It shows that we have work to do. And we would hope that this will then demonstrate, this is why we have done that. It's basically the idea of we have data, we have reliable data that we feel we can comfortably rely on to give us a true picture of how our students are progressing. Now, I'd like to, if possible, turn it over to you, Director Kilconan, about how the outreach is going to work to help the faculty. She's already talked about it somewhat. But in more specific terms, in two areas. One, how to help those teachers who are less experienced and lesser educated become better teachers in a hurry, as well as the possibility of using this as far as assessing how we are meeting our standards and benchmarks, which is right in front of you right now. That'll tell you right now, for this student, we're not meeting those standards and benchmarks at all. And our average is also saying, we're not meeting those benchmarks at all. We are not giving the students what they deserve.
So in front of you, you have an individual assessment. In the far corner, it says the fourth grade. And then it says to the left, and I say the test. And then it says, ELA total. Do you follow? In front of you. It says, ELA total. So English, so we're not allowed to say language art, which is vocabulary, writing, expression. It says, ELA total. Go all the way across, and it says GE. It says GE, it says 2.3. It means it says, fourth grade, and on a grade level, you're in second grade. First grade. So see, I give it, I give it, I'm going to go fourth grade. And then you can go down, and we're going to go to subject area. Reading in second grade, writing in first grade, vocabulary first grade. So we're going to go to second grade. So we're not allowed to say that. It says, we're not allowed to say that. I give it, I give it, I give it, I give it focus. And I'm going to hopefully go more in the school year and say, we're not allowed to say fourth grade level. So with this, I give it the driver outreach. So for example, it says, I'm going to go fourth grade, and I'm going to say English. Yeah, I send the specialist for English. I'm going to measure grade level teams, I go to school, and I say, I'm going to measure third, my second. It's a more mid-third, my second. You know, more than a senior, I got school. It was a real, it was a fourth grade level. It's a, important, it's a instructional arrangement. We have one year to close the gap. So, the school, grade level, in time, in fourth grade, and we will, I say, one, two, three, four, three years achievement gap. So, the last, we're all getting, I got school, in the classroom.